Good evening, and welcome to the July 23, 2012 meeting of the Lake Forest zoning board of appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community.
We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. I'm first going to ask all board members and then the staff to introduce themselves. Mr. Culberson?
Lloyd Culberson, fourth ward.
Richard Christoff, fourth ward.
Sam Ciccarelli, third ward.
Stuart Dixon, second ward.
Frankson, first ward.
Jay Kennedy, fourth ward.
Rosemary Care, second ward.
Kathy Cerniak.
Megan O'Neil.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2012 meeting. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Moved to approve the June 25 ZBA minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion is to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2012 zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Lake Forest. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion is carried. Our next item of business is a new petition for consideration of a request for setback variances for additions to an existing residence at 10 South June Terrace. The owners are Louis and Lindsay Nero, and the representative is Troy Mock, architect. Before we begin to listen to the petitioner, I'd ask any board members if they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report.
None.
Seeing none, Mr. Mock?
Yes.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say that there is a change on the drawings from what is shown on your set of drawings and what I'm presenting here today. Specifically, it is the front yard setback. Your drawing that I've provided you show a 40-foot front yard setback. In reading the commentary from the village, apparently it's actually a 30-foot front yard setback that is required. In any case, the existing house is 25 feet, 6 inches from the front property line, so there is a variance, but the percentage of the variance that is being requested is actually considerably less than what is shown on your drawings because it is a 30-foot front yard setback and not a 40. I'm not sure what the miscommunication was, but I just wanted to point that out. The slide that is here represents on the left-hand side the existing footprint of the house, and on the right-hand side, the proposed. This footprint has a small projection here, and even a smaller projection in front of that that represents a front entrance and a portico, if you will, covered portico. Our new portico, however wider, does not encroach any further towards the front or the front property line than the existing portico. We're just simply making it wider. We're making it wider for architectural reasons, we're making it wider for aesthetic purposes. But I want to be clear that we're not actually encroaching anymore into or into the front yard property. That line, my hand, please stay still, is the same distance away as that line right there. The addition in the back is asking for no variances, but we are removing this portion of the house and putting a slightly larger family room off the back of the house and a mudroom. This is the landscape plan, we will come back to that, and this is simply an existing plot of survey. This slide, however dark it is right here, shows June Terrace, 10 June Terrace is the property line. This is the setback shown right here, and if you can see, you can see the houses to the left and to the right of June Terrace do encroach into the existing property line or the existing setback. So the house currently lines up with all the other houses on, that's all this slide is trying to show, is that currently 10 June Terrace lines up with all, most if not all of the houses on June Terrace. They're all set back equally as they were all built at a time when the setback was different than it is today. This is the existing house. This is the entry, and this area right here with this Gothic arch and the columns represents the covered entry that we are removing from the house, and our new covered entry, however wider, this area right here does not again encroach any farther into the front yard setback than this. This covered entry, we're simply making it wider because we're trying to accentuate the architectural massings of this house. This house looks like it wants to have a center entry, it's not. If we simply added dormers up here, it would accentuate the fact that it's slightly off-center. So we wanted to really exemplify the fact that this front entry is not centered on the house and create two different massings, a primary and a secondary, which is why we're asking for the variance for the front entry and the covered entry in trying to design towards Lake Forest design guidelines. This is the right, existing right elevation, and I think this is an important slide, this is the proposed right elevation. Again, if I go back to the existing, this is this covered entry right here, and our new covered entry here is the same in terms of how it encroaches, it's simply wider. You can also see that our second floor addition that happens here happens at the same eve line. The eve line that's right here, we're not changing the height of that eve line, we're not changing the distance from the existing eaves of the house off the grade, they're staying the same, we're simply changing the roof pitch of the house, elongating the house so we can create some second floor space up here. You can see that we've dormered a lot of the second floor out so we can keep the height of the house to a minimum. The height of the house is, forgive me, I think it's 31 feet, so it's quite a bit less than the maximum we can go to. This is the existing rear elevation. This is the proposed rear elevation. Again, you can see dormers coming out the backside of the main gable. Simply, again, the reason why we're doing that is because the eaves that are existing or here are the same height as the existing eaves here. This isn't, I showed this picture, although it's hard, you can see this existing dining room projecting out. It's an awkward mass, it sits on a slab. The only reason we're removing this is because we can't, we simply can't build on top of it, and this addition is, we're not asking for a variance on this addition anyway. This is the other elevation, the other side elevation, and again, I'm showing this. I want to be clear about the portico, which is the variance that we're asking for. It sits here, and our new portico does not sit any closer to the street and simply is a shed roof to create a massing that is architectural pleasing for the front elevation. We're doing a 12-12 pitch roof to try to find some space up on the second floor and an appropriate shed dormer. These are floor plans, but what I'd really like to talk to you in the time that I have left is the overlays, because I think it's important when I go to the, specifically the left and the right overlays, which are OV2 and OV4. The shaded area here indicates the part of the house, the existing house, that is currently non-conforming to the front yard setback. This line right here represents the new shed roof. So you can see our shed roof at no point is higher than the existing peaks of the entry and the covered entry of the existing house. So even though our entry is wider, it's actually lower in terms of its height. If I go back to the front elevation, you can see there's the peak of the covered entry, and there's the peak of the front, I'm sorry, yeah, of the covering, and there's the peak of the front entry. And even though this is our new shed dormer or shed roof covered entry, it at no point is higher than the existing peaks of the existing entry. The other variance we're asking for is for side yard setback for this chimney. Again, we're hatching the area, which is OV1, we're hatching the area that is shown to be non-conforming and existing non-conformity. We're simply asking that we be able to raise the height of this chimney to meet current building codes, so it is 2 feet above any portion of the roof within 10 feet. In order to do that, we have to build that chimney straight up. That chimney is currently 6 to 7 inches encroaching on the side yard setbacks, so we're asking for variance to be able to raise that chimney to meet building codes, and that's the only reason we're asking for that variance. So we're asking for a variance of 5 feet, forgive me, Megan, 8 inches for the front portico, and a variance for 6 inches for this portion of the chimney so it meets building codes. At this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mock.
You're welcome.
And now we will hear the identification of issues by the staff.
Thank you, Chairman Care. As was noted by the petitioner, this project consists of removal of the existing roof and replacement with a taller roof structure as well as modification to the front porch that elongates the porch along the front facade of the structure. Just to clarify some of the setback issues that were brought up by the petitioner, the zoning district that this property is located in requires a 40-foot front yard setback. There is a platted setback of 30 feet, and we would recognize that as the setback for this property. The, and as a result, the amount of encroachment that's being requested is reduced from the diagrams that are shown in your packets this evening. The petitioner did provide an overlay drawing, he provided it after we had submitted our packets to you last week, but it is provided to you at your seats this evening, excuse me. And that really begins to show how the existing house sits and what the amount of encroachment that is requested, of new encroachment that's requested this evening. From a zoning setback standpoint, the project is consistent with the prevailing setback on the street. A lot of the homes in this neighborhood are sited closer to the street than the district requirement of 40 feet and consistent with the 30-foot setback that's planted on the plaits in this area. Front yard setback variances are often very challenging given the characteristic of a neighborhood and the visibility from the street of encroachment. I think in this case, the project is unique in that it enhances the character of the project by providing a usable front porch and is also maintaining that prevailing setback that is seen on the street. With respect to the design of the project, the building review board did consider this project earlier this month. Changes were requested with respect to the detailing and architectural features to make them more appropriate with the design guidelines that the city has in place. No footprint changes were directed by the building review board, so at this point, oftentimes we like to resolve the building review board issues prior to bringing it to the zoning board, but in this case, because the issues were more detailing and architectural features, we felt comfortable bringing this forward to you this evening. The building review board will take final action on this item in August. There are positive findings in your staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this request. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any questions or requests for clarification from the board to either the petitioner or staff?
A question has occurred to me. How much taller is the roof structure than the existing?
6 feet.
6 feet taller. Staff, I would ask you, in your finding of facts, item number four says the variance in the resulting addition will not impair light or ventilation to adjacent properties. Is it your determination that the higher roof structure will not do that, will not impair light or ventilation to adjacent properties?
Looking from a streetscape perspective, the increase in height does not appear to be inconsistent with other structures on the block. It's not creating a structure that's out of scale with the streetscape.
What is the height of the proposed roof structure? Do you know offhand?
Off the top of my head, I am not sure. I believe it's 31 feet.
Is that comparable to the neighboring structures?
I don't know exactly what they are, but it is low.
Would staff know that?
I don't know the exact height of the neighboring properties, but when this project went to the building review board, there was streetscape images proposed, and the issue of compatibility with respect to height was not addressed outright by the building review board, but it wasn't brought up as a negative point either.
Good enough. Also, there was a correspondence with respect to drainage concerns. When I looked at the neighborhood, I believe that home was 2 doors away, is that correct?
I believe it's 3 doors away.
3 doors away.
It's on a corner, and as far as I understand, the drainage issues that that home is currently having has to do with construction that's happening opposite, further away from the house, so they're concerned that construction here is going to affect them, and it simply won't. It's just impossible for us to get water there unless we dig a ditch, and we're not, so.
Would staff concur with that conclusion?
Certainly, in this neighborhood and with small lot neighborhoods throughout the city, drainage is always a concern. As the project moves forward through the permitting process, a grading and drainage plan will be required to be reviewed by our engineers. But at this point, based on a preliminary review by our engineers, the scope of this project does not appear to create a negative impact on drainage.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I have a follow-up question, and not that we're following in the BRB's footsteps, but again, they didn't have any issues with overall footprint, but rather building materials and design?
That's correct. It was more the use of brackets, the placement of windows, the color palette that was proposed, the proportion of some of the windows, that kind of thing.
Okay, and if I'm straight, then our job tonight is primarily, or maybe only, the porch addition, the roof alteration being close to the neighboring properties, and then the chimney extension. Did that summarize what we're being asked to look at tonight?
The zoning variances requested is with respect to the chimney and the front porch. The rest of the project is in compliance with zoning setback, but certainly can be weighed in as part of your consideration of those areas of encroachment.
And that would include the height of the roof is within?
Only the porch area of the roof is within the setback area.
Right, we don't have anything to do with the height. The height, it's just whether or not it's within those setbacks.
Well, I wonder if that, I'm not sure about that. If you look at the zoning code, you know, impair light or ventilation to adjacent properties, if they, if the door is opened on the zoning question and the height was impairing light or ventilation to adjacent properties, it may well come within the purview of our consideration. But it doesn't sound like that's an issue here from what I've heard staff and the BRB say.
Megan, what is the roof height that's allowed in that area?
I believe it's 35 feet.
And this is going to be about 31 feet?
Yes.
And there's second, there's other houses on the same side of this, of June Terrace that are two-story, isn't that correct?
That is correct. If I might, I mean, every effort has been made to keep the height of this building to a minimum. That's why we're using the same eve heights, we simply changed the pitch of the roof. We've dormered where possible to create secondary, second-story space as opposed to just creating height for the sake of height. Without actually changing a roof pitch to less than 12-12, I don't know how to get the ridge line of this house any lower.
City staff, has any other correspondence been received prior to tonight's meeting?
No, we have not received any additional correspondence. I would also like to just clarify the height of the house. Looking at the front elevation, I believe it's closer to 27 feet in height, just noting where the 19-foot calculation line is, just as a point of clarification.
And I have a question for Mr. Mock, and this is more because of the neighbor's concern than because it's strictly a zoning issue that we would address here on the board. But you had mentioned that the addition in the back, which is within the setbacks?
Yes.
Is not buildable, it won't take weight, it's just a concrete slab?
The existing structure that is there, there is an addition to the house now that was built after the original house was built, that is containing the dining room. That structure is a slab and will not, we cannot build a second story on that.
Okay, so...
Regardless, we want to take that down, and we've made that portion of the back of the house just slightly larger to accommodate a larger family room and a mudroom, and then we've built a one-and-a-half-story structure on top of the new foundation.
So as you take the proposal before the engineer for drainage and building?
Yes.
You'll address, will you have a crawl space, will you have drainage, how will you work that out in the back?
It will be a crawl space, we will have drainage tile, and we're going to have a full set of engineering drawings showing topography and grade and slope and catchbasins if we need them, whatever we need to do to make sure that water doesn't, the runoff of water isn't any greater or exacerbated by our structure. It's all going to be contained within the site, and we're going to have, I don't know, IG Consulting, which has been a civil engineering firm in the North Shore for decades, is going to be doing the work, so we'll have a full set of engineering drawings to submit.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, now it's time for public testimony. Is there anyone who would care to speak? And would you please identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Rich Terrence.
Hi, Rich, would you please?
I live at 2 North June Terrace, so I'm probably the person that you're referring to as far as correspondence regarding the drainage. I've lived in the neighborhood...
I'm sorry, before you start, I need to swear you in.
Oh, sure.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
So I've lived in the neighborhood for a little over 10 years, and there was a piece of construction that was done, you know, that budded at my property a number of years ago, and there were some variations that were given. I didn't get involved, I didn't think it was a big deal. I saw a material difference in the amount of drainage that was coming into my yard because of increased footprint. So that's the only reason I'm concerned here. We're increasing the footprint, I mean, my rough back-of-the-envelope calculation's about 8% to 9% increase. There's an interesting part of the topography about the street itself. Where 10 South June Terrace, where they're proposing to do these additions and renovations, it's kind of on a little hill, so it drains kind of north as well as south. I know the people that live directly to the south of them have drainage issues from some building they've done, and I'm just worried that, you know, the water's just kind of going to flow off the property and go into adjacent properties, perhaps mine, which is 2 doors to the north. And that's really all I want to raise there. There's been a lot of foliage, kind of wild area in the back that's been cleared, and in the past, it probably was soaking up a lot of the groundwater and rainwater, that's been removed, so I have a feeling there's going to be a greater runoff. This year, it hasn't been an issue because we haven't had any rain, it's been very hot. But in years past, I noticed when I first moved in, you know, in the springtime, my backyard would be a little squishy, and as years have gone by, it's gotten more so. So all I really want to do is just raise a concern that we look at, you know, appropriate drainage measures, and so it doesn't affect everyone else's property on the street, you know, talking mosquitoes and all the other stuff that comes with standing water. So I just really want to raise that, that's why I...
Thank you, and we can certainly understand your concern. I would have a question for staff also on the landscaping. Is the landscaping plan for this site also part of the permitting process?
The building review board actually looked at a preliminary landscape plan, and as part of that process, the petitioner's working with the city arborist to replant that rear area. There are some trees that will need to be removed associated with this project, and the replacement inches will be distributed throughout the yard.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Then I would like to ask if any board members have any final questions, comments, any issues they'd like to raise. Mr. Frankson?
Well, just a comment. I mean, this is not unlike quite a few other petitions we've seen recently. It's a GR3 zoning designation, and I don't know if none of the houses, but probably the vast majority of the houses on the street don't conform to 30-foot setback, so if anybody's going to upgrade their homes to the 21st century, they're going to have a hardship, and they're going to need a variance. In this case, the porch addition is essentially the same metric as what it is now. The chimney has to be extended to be per code, and the roof issue, we already covered that, so, you know, I'm going to support it. Looks like a very tasteful renovation to the house that'll actually add some value to the neighborhood, and again, not unlike other things we've seen here lately.
Thank you.
I'm prepared to support the endorsement, Chairman Kerr. I think recognizing the neighbor's petition with regards to the drainage concerns and slope of the street, it's hoped that in the engineering process and in the approval process, working with city staff, that any additional drainage issues can be addressed as part of the permitting process so that all parties involved can live happily ever after in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I agree.
I agree. I would support it.
Are there any other comments from the petitioner?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If you would entertain a motion. Moved to recommend approval to the city council, the requested variance at 10 South June Terrace to allow for the new porch addition, roof extension, roof alteration, and chimney extension, all as outlined per staff's memo. And I'm questioning, do we need to make a comment in here for Stu's drainage issue, or is that adequately accommodated in the city process?
You can certainly mention it as part of your motion through the building review board and the permitting process, it will be...
Okay, I'm going to add to that special consideration vibrance of the drainage review by city engineer. That's the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion is carried. Now is the time for any member of the public to address the zoning board on any matters not currently on the agenda. Seeing no one stepping forward, I would ask staff then, is there, are there any additional comments or information you'd like to?
Just a reminder that your regularly scheduled meeting is on August 27, and we do have an item on that agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.